Please pull out your handbooks.
All right, so what time we are here? About a minute. I think we're on, are we Stacy? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 11th, 2019 regularly scheduled work session. Tonight, we have three items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to each agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card. And if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit saying that you have the authority of said organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Once the item is called, no other public comment cards will be accepted. So Suti, if you would please call the first agenda item.
First agenda.
Public comment.
First agenda item this evening is proclamation recognizing Arbor Day 2019. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. I have a proclamation here tonight for Arbor Day 2019. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agricultural that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and our source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Milton has been designated as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for 10 consecutive years. And whereas the city of Milton and our citizens are committed to the stewardship of our natural resources. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton hereby recognize and proclaim February 15th, 2019 as Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to plant new trees and to protect our existing trees for this and future generations. And this is given under my hand and the seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the 11th day of February 2019. And if we, the council can join me down there, we'll present this proclamation. Also want to introduce and welcome Sandra Dewitt, who is our new Arbor. So if she'll join us up here too.
As many of you know, Sandra is taking over Mark Law as new hire. She's got some big shoes to replace. We're welcome to Milton.
Thank you.
And here's our 10-year partner. So did you want to be? How? You want to be?
You're trying to get away. We're not going to let you.
That's good. Just you guys take a step back toward the council. There you go. And perfect. Hold it open. There you go. Let me get the sign holders to scooch over this way just a little bit. Perfect. I can't see it. It's, yeah, it might be better. Yeah, let's focus on this. All right, Sandra, if you could go down a little bit on your side. Perfect. All right, and let's see. I need, hold on. Can you come over here Peyton, if you don't mind? Where did the org go?
You guys are going to hurt their reputation.
I know. Michelle, take a step back just a little bit. Keep going a little bit farther. Hey, watch it. All right, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Stay still. I have to do the digital picture too. Sorry.
Because there's only one proclamation tonight.
Yes, thank goodness. Okay. One, two, three. Couple of them. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next item this evening is discussion of former Milton Country Club, Mr. Parag Agrawal.
And can I ask, do we have any public comments?
We do not, sir.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Parag Agrawal, city's community development director. And today, we are here to give you an update on the planning of the former Milton Country Club property. Today, I also have with me our principal planner, Michelle McIntosh Ross, and our parks planner, parks director Jim, who are the important contributing members for this project. As you all know, this project has two phases, phase one and phase two. Phase one deals with the planning of the former Milton Country Club property, that's 135 acres of former Milton Country Club. And phase two deals with the Central Milton Trail. So today, we will be giving you an update only on the Milton Country Club property. And we will be doing some more additional planning and more community outreach on the Central Milton Trail part of this project. And we will be engaging with the city council members in a much closer way to work on the trail master plan. So after Assistant City Manager Carter Lucas retired, the community development department is taking a much leading role on the trail master plan, working with the public department of public works. So we thought we should work more closely with all the stakeholders to come up with some more options for the Central Milton Trail. So after this small introduction, I will invite our consultant, Will, who is from Kimley Horn, and he will be talking to you more about the planning of the active and also passive areas of the Milton Country Club property. Thank you.
Give me a moment here to just toggle to the presentation. And it just disappeared. There we go. Okay, we're ready to begin. Thank you so much. My name is William Herbig. I've shared with you and brought you along on our process to think through concept planning for the former Milton Country Club as we begin to think through design and development and phasing for its transformation into a passive park. I'm absolutely thrilled to share the progress. When we last met with you, we gave you an update on the results of our public engagement. And now we have taken some of those guiding principles and begun to lay out a design and layout for the park, along with a first look at some high-level cost estimates. I'm absolutely thrilled also that we're doing this on a night that we're celebrating Arbor Day. It just seems fitting that trees and sustainability and a passive park all get discussed on one night. So I thought what we do is just give you an update and reiterate some of the background of the project, talk about the results of the public engagement that we had throughout the fall, go over the guiding principles that then informed the concept plan. I have along with me our friend Matt Kane from Clark Patterson Lee, and he will actually walk you through the details of the design that we've come up with. So as a reminder, I'm with Kimley Horn. We're the project management team leading the process on behalf of the city. We partnered with Clark Patterson Lee on design issues for the park. And then we also have an equestrian expert that has been working with us, Jan Hancock, who is here for some of our public engagement. She's based in Phoenix and has been weighing in to make sure that all of the decisions and recommendations of the plan are rooted in sound equestrian planning and accommodation. And we also are partnered with McFarland Dyer, who is doing topographic survey work on trails outside of the park as part of the phase two of the project. So as a project team, we established some project ground rules very early on. And they were, number one, honor Milton's rural character. This was critical to the acquisition of the park space as a green space bond property. Two, build upon existing plans and studies. And so a lot of the ideas come out of the Milton Trails blueprint and some other parks and recreation space planning. We wanted to make sure that we were designing safe and attractive spaces that could accommodate a variety of users and types. And we wanted to have a meaningful public engagement process that valued all of the stakeholders and all of the voices of Milton and its citizens. The project is divided into two phases, the park being phase one. We started that back at the Crab Apple Fest was when we really started, back in October, focused on the park. And on the other side of this meeting, we'll begin focused on trails beyond the boundaries of the park and a meaningful conversation with community about what connectivity and accessibility looks like from a trails perspective. Here's just a summary of the project's scope. The park space itself, 140 acres of the former Milton Country Club. It is bordered by basically Freemanville on the west, Dinsmore Road on the north, Chicken Creek coming along the east and southern boundaries of the park. And I believe you can see my cursor on your screen. As part of this scope, we were looking, as part phase two, we're looking at how did this park not sit within a vacuum but fit in a larger accessibility network within the city? And so looking at connectivity issues and opportunities at the Fulton County School Site, it's an over 80-acre site on the other side of Freemanville Road. And then as identified through the Milton Trails blueprint, the Central Milton Trail looked at opportunities to evaluate the shared use gravel roads through the central part of the city as a community amenity. We will continue to evaluate route options through here. The yellow line only indicates that route that was identified at a high level through the Trails blueprint last year. So phase one, we start in August. We did site assessments and facilities of the park itself. We did community outreach through the fall, and now we're here with concept plans and phasing. Phase two, we will look at those trails and that Central Milton Trail meaningfully with the community, beginning later this month and into March. So let's talk a little bit about the site and facilities assessment out there. As we began to look at the site and just to orient you to this map, we've now gone from a north-south orientation to kind of an east-west orientation. So just to orient you to this map, and this is how we'll look at the park throughout the rest of the presentation, Freemanville is running here at the top of the screen. Dinsmore Road is this road at the far left, and Chicken Creek is our eastern and southern border here at the bottom and right side of the page. As we began to look at the park, we divided it into two zones. Everything in green was acquired with the green space bond funds. It was compelled to remain passive in its use. But what we determined very early on is that the park was not one identity. It really had two clear zones. One is the North Woods. That is the area shown in the lighter green, and that has the most direct impacts on the adjacent residential neighborhoods. The darker green zone to the southern end of the property referred to as the South Woods has less residential impacts, has much more rolling topography, and from a design perspective and use perspective, had to be thought of differently. As part of the city's acquisition, there was an additional seven acres of club facilities that we refer to as the active acres. That includes the former clubhouse, the pool, and the tennis courts, along with 126 parking spaces that are used or used for the site. There also is a maintenance facility and a storage basement. We looked at those facilities, its use, and also talked to members of those active, the swim team and the tennis teams. And that is just some of the site facilities. We looked at the clubhouse building itself. Was it viable for reuse? Was it viable for operation by a third-party vendor? We found a lot about that building. It actually was structurally sound, in really good shape. Its roof needs a little work, and just structurally and architecturally, it's a little dated. It needs a little bit of love. But the bones are there. We found that the walls of the roof itself was only structurally supported on the exterior walls, so that gave a great amount of flexibility for how the interior of that space might be reconsidered or rearranged or repurposed. One idea through the process was to open up that facility, make it more of a pavilion, something like the Broadwell Pavilion. Unfortunately, that was not an opportunity because of the way the flooring and the foundation that structure is could not be exposed to weather. So we'll have some suggestions we'll share with you of how that facility might be reconsidered and repurposed. As we went and looked at the passive facilities, the former greenways or fairways of the site, there became some really apparent issues out there. Number one, there is a variety of legal easements that do not belong to the city, that the city has to continue a process of abandonment on those easements that belong and transfer back to private owners adjacent to the course. Number two, even those cart paths that are in the city's domain of the site, many of them are in really rough condition. And so there needs to be, it's not as simple as simply going out there, opening access and reusing those cart paths. There are opportunities where we need to take out some of those hazardous conditions and knit a trail system together. Drainage is failing throughout the site. A lot of the, there's nothing as artificial as a natural golf course, and all of that artificial draining drainage that is going through that site is collapsing. And it is very hazardous, and so that is going to be a primary concern to evaluate and look at going forward. There is a couple bridges that are failing on the site. One of them is in the North Woods. You see it there, the structural piers are actually floating in the air without any support underneath them. And then what looks like some beautiful trees throughout the site actually need to be looked at. There could be some that have disease, there are some that are reaching the end of their useful life. So a tree survey to look at and remove those hazardous trees needs to be done relatively soon before opening the site up to the public. So with all of that information, we went out to the public, starting at Crab Apple Fest. We launched an online questionnaire hosted on the city's website, and we hosted a series of targeted public meetings focused on target groups. We brought in the adjacent owners, homeowners of the course, to talk with us first. Then we talked with members of the active facilities, the tenant, members of the tennis club, the pool. We also had meetings with members of city committees, the open space committee, the Better Together Committee, the equestrian committee, had conversations about their needs and interests. And then we had a catch-all citywide session. We made sure that each of those sessions, whether it was online questionnaires or in-person, asked the same questions, so we could compare the input across all input modes. And then we came back to the city council. I gave you a briefing a few months ago, and prior to that briefing, we had an open house over in Community Place to make sure that we got it right and that we were translating correctly what we heard from the public. Here's some images from those public sessions. They were held, most of them were held in this room. It was very robust. It was very engaging. We made sure that people had a chance to talk, that they were educated about what was happening out on the site, along with case studies from other passive parks that had been converted from former golf courses. We got lots of great input from the types of trails that folks want to the things that they don't want. And that was all reflected in guiding principles I'll share with you in a second. We also translated a lot of the physical input. There is only so much that we know and could see, and by kind of open sourcing input by the public, we were able to capture a lot more details about existing conditions on the site, and we tried to chronicle all of that input as well. We also wanted to go out and truth what we heard, and so the consultant team, along with Jan Hancock from Phoenix and city staff, we all went out on the course in the ATVs. I think I'm still pulling out grass and weeds from my clothes and hair from the ride. And we went out and just made sure that what we heard from the public, we wanted to see it in person. We looked at easement issues. We looked at the Fulton County School property across Freemanville, and we wanted to make sure that we saw it all in person. All of that was translated into seven guiding principles. And these are ranked in the order that we heard from the public. Number one, the number one thing we heard was a desire to promote safety and mitigate impacts of the park on adjacent neighbors. This meant everything from physical defining public and private space from the backyards of homes to making sure this was a dusk, a dawn-to-dusk facility with no additional lighting, that there was not a nighttime facility. It was making sure there wasn't growth of existing programs with, you know, physically growing the footprint of some of the existing programs, but staying within those seven active acres. Each one of these guiding principles also is associated with design guidelines, and you see those on the first page of your handout that I gave you. The second guiding principle was to retain the existing programs, allow flexibility for growth for tennis and swim, but not really looking for a lot more. So stick with the existing programs, but maybe another tennis court or two, but not a whole lot more. Number three, celebrate and restore nature throughout the passive preserve. We're compelled to do that by the obligations of the Green Space Bond Fund, and the public just reiterated that that was an important thing. And so one of the design decisions that came out of this is no new hard-surface trails in this park. It'll be a passive rural landscape with soft-surface trails is our recommendation. And almost make, make this environment more pastoral and more rural and more beautiful than it has been in any version that it's been since it was a golf course. D, balance multiple uses within the park. It is important. We did not see a hierarchy of what folks wanted. There are strong desires to go out and walk and hike, there are strong desires to go out and bike, there's strong desires to go and ride your horse. And so being able to accommodate those variety of uses safely and provide a different amount of experiences was critically important. And then beyond the park, how do you support safe park connections beyond the boundaries of the park? And so how do you cross Freemanville becomes important. How do you access Dinsmore? How do you get from the active acres to what used to be Fairway One in a safe environment that also speaks with a design language that is the park becomes very important. And then distributing access points and parking off-site. We know that we have 126 parking spots at the active acres off of Dinsmore. There is a concern of a dish, as this park becomes more of a location to come and for peaceful walks, how do we accommodate the additional users of the park? And so distributing those, not just growing parking at the active acres, but in a couple other locations, and we'll show you how that is done, how it might be done. And finally, there's a desire that Milton not go at it alone, and to make this park successful require partnerships with the adjacent landowners and other organizations such as Audubon Society and others to really take this park to the next level. And this includes not only design issues, but also seeking funding opportunities from adjacent organizations or other organizations and partnerships. So all that translates into a physical plan, a draft concept plan. And our draft concept plan is divided into seven trail And our draft concept plan is divided into seven trail types, and it actually comes to about seven miles of trails that can be accommodated with 140 acres of the former golf course. It is made up of two core loop trails to accommodate walking and biking, almost four miles of that core loop trail. It accommodates a bridle path of almost three miles, running mostly along Chicken Creek. There's a variety of soft-surface spur trails. That would be for smaller walks, walkers only. There's a small section of boardwalk to get through some areas that are relatively wet. Show you where those are. And then a connecting side path on Dinsmore that would connect between the Active Acres and what used to be Fairway One, so that we complete a loop. So what I want to do is take you very, very broad in terms of the concept plan, and then we're going to go more detailed. And I'll bring Matt up to talk through the details, but I want to talk through a sequence of phasing, and then we'll look at the details. I always think it is important, when we're presenting a plan, the most powerful ideas can be simply sketched. And so when I think about how this park lays out on a map, and if I were simply to take a napkin, it turns into almost a symbol of an affinity loop with its two core loop trails. And then along the south and east along Chicken Creek is our core equestrian trail. So if we take this concept plan to its very simplest line, it is basically this. And I think that is, the most successful plans are those that can be sketched on a napkin. And so we have two core loops, and they translate onto the site in this way. So I basically extrapolated the map that we saw. I've tried to simplify it to the most deliberate essential elements. And so you see the North Woods here on the left-hand side. You see the Active Acres with the round circle. Dinsmore is running on the right, and then you see a smaller core loop in the South Woods running on the right, the left-hand side of the page, and we'll walk through the phasing of how we get to this ultimate build-out. So to start with, the first phase, Phase 1A, the objective is to address the safety hazards that are on the site that I shared with you a few moments ago and open the park to the public. This is based on reusing the existing cart path through the North Woods only. Simply go out there, we take out the segments that are on the adjacent property owners, property, the easement paths, remove the hazardous segments of the path that are city-owned. We fill in the gaps with a stabilized granite surface, and then we establish a model trail section at the Active Acres, so the community can see where this park is going over time. So I have a segmented trail that says, this is the demonstration. This is where we're headed. And then maintaining the active programs at the Active Acres, the swim and tennis programs. So with that, we can get the park open, get the folks, the community out to the North Woods portion of the site. That gets us about a U-shaped loop of about 2.2 miles of trail by reusing the existing cart path. That can operate for a while, but then there's going to be a time where you want to build out the ideal condition in the North Woods. One of the guiding principles is to move the cart path, to move the trail as far away from residential properties as possible. And so in Phase 1B, the existing cart path in the North Woods is removed, and the trail is moved to the other side of what used to be the fairways. And we basically go from the inside of the loop to the outside. We get a little larger trail, and so we get to 2.4-mile trail, basically running through the same segment of the North Woods, but we've completely abandoned the cart path. In 1C, we take the U-shape of the North Woods loop, and we actually make it a loop by adding a side path along Dinsmore Road from what used to be Fairway One to the Active Acres. So now there is a complete loop of almost two and a half miles to go through the North Woods. And that is one complete soft-surface trail, except for the Dinsmore roadside path would most likely be a combination of a soft-surface bridle path for the future and a hard-surface That may take one to three years to complete Phases 1A to 1C. We move to Phase 2, and this may be between three, five, six years that you move into the second phase of the build-out and evolution of this park. And it is in this timeframe that you expand into the South Woods. And that is at this time that you may consider connectivity to the Fulton County School Site, which is across Freemanville Road. So we extend a soft-surface trail out to the Fulton County, to Freemanville, and to the Fulton County School Site to accommodate additional parking and access to meet that goal of distributing access off-site. And we'll talk about some connectivity issues of how you overcome the barrier of Freemanville. We have some options. 2B, we add a road or an access, vehicular access point into the South Woods to provide some additional parking into the South Woods. No additional trail in this intervention. And we'll show you what that looks like. This will provide a new trailhead to the park, also an opportunity to repurpose the existing restrooms in the South Woods as well, that used to operate as kind of the halfway house for the golf course. Moving into Phase 3, we complete a South Woods loop along with spur trails, soft-surface spur trails that run through the South Woods, and it's rolling topography there. We also complete the core equestrian trail along Chicken Creek, which is envisioned as almost a duplication from a character and design point of view as a North Valley Trail on the other side of the creek. And finally, Phase 3B is connections beyond the park. That is to be evaluated and looked at as part of subsequent trail discussions as part of Phase 2 of the project. So with that, high-level overview of the phasing over time, I want to turn it over to Matt Kane with Clark Patterson Lee to walk us through the details of the plan.
I think you can just use forward here.
Excuse me. My name's Matt Kane. I'm a landscape architect. I've been a park designer for over 40 years, and I'm on the team to take this program that Will has worked out, that we've pulled together with the public and figure out exactly how will it fit on this property and work the best. Now, you've heard Will talk about loop trails, and from having done trails my whole life, I know that a loop works far better than a go-out-and-come-back. People just kind of fight the idea of turning around and going back where they came. If I can start here, make a loop, and end up where I started, that's the best way to do it. And you see that's represented in the way we've laid the plans out already. And of course, the golf course itself lends itself to that sort of design. If you pay close attention to the drawing in front of you, the circulation is as this. The red is the granite trail. I understand that the granite trail is not a hard-surface trail. It's a pervious trail, but you can ride bicycles on it. You can push a baby carriage on it. You can roll a wheelchair on it. But it's not like concrete. Those are the red trails. That's the complete system. The orange trails are the soft-surface, little loop trails where people can get off of the main trail and go somewhere else, get off the main way. And then down by the creek, it's hard to see it, but there's a green line that runs straight through. Now, you'll also notice that the equestrian trail is not a loop. That's because the equestrian trail in this park is part of a much bigger loop system that's in the trail system that Will's been talking about. So this is a link in the equestrian system, whereas for the pedestrians and the bicyclists and the people who are going to come to the site specifically to use it, those are where the loop trails are in place.
Matt, if you press one ahead, that'll highlight the equestrian route.
One?
I think if you, no, just the forward arrow just once.
Wrong way.
There you go.
The yellow is the equestrian route, which is the link. It goes from Dinsmore Road up to the Fulton County School System. And as Will pointed out to you, the Dinsmore Road will be connected somewhere else, and then from the school, it's connected somewhere else, and eventually it all ties together. Access points. What we noticed when we started looking at this property is you've got this nice big piece of property, but it's hard to get to. It's not available to just drive into it, especially with a vehicle. The one major point is at Dinsmore Road by the active area. That's the car access point. The other car access point could have been up at, what is the word, Lewis Road. But through meetings with the public and in research, and then we figured out that was not a good place to try to get in with vehicles, because using it would have brought so much traffic through there. It's a very narrow road, and it's a very difficult place to do that. Down at Dinsmore, down at Fairway One on Dinsmore Road is an access point. That's one of the other three places that actually touched public property, where we could access the point. However, that spot is difficult from a visual, people coming around that curve, grade elevation, speed. It's not a very good place for putting vehicles. But we decided that would probably be better for horses when needed and our pedestrians, so people could walk in that way without having to access the roadway itself. Then the one up in the far-left corner is across the Kennedy Property. It's still a question, but that's an opportunity where we can make an access point across other property. Going down Dinsmore Road, if you've walked it, when you go from the Active Acres or the clubhouse down toward Fairway One, the road's high, and the ground falls off. And it falls off enough that you can't really do 18 feet of trail without the trail ending up like this and being unusable. So the only way we know we can make that work, and there's space enough there to make it work, it's just the grades are bad, is to add a retaining wall down that edge, take out the fence that exists there, put in the retaining wall, put the fence on top of the retaining wall, and then put these connecting trails along Dinsmore Road. And as you saw what Will said, that Dinsmore Road connection is very critical to make that final loop. There was an easement at one time in the golf course that had a connection there, but that easement had to be given back to the homeowners, because the city didn't actually own it. So this becomes a critical connection for the purpose of the loop. The connection to the Fulton County Schools, which is an access point, which we feel is very critical, because if we are going to allow horses to come in or allow a lot of people to come in with vehicles, there needs to be a staging point or a parking space, and we don't want to get over into the property and do a lot of that. We know that we can do that on the Fulton County School Sites. It's already been decided. The difficult challenge is accessing it and getting across Freemanville Road. We have a couple of ideas of how to do it. We could either cross the road, or we could go down and go under the bridge at Chicken Creek. Chicken Creek is one of the opportunities that we have, because we've gone under there and checked the distance, the elevation distance is enough to do this sort of thing. And we've done that in a number of places on trails in the past. We need about 12 feet for a rider to go with a horse under there, and we know we can cut it out, and it's on the right side of the creek, so that we don't have to cross the creek. We just go down under the bridge and back. And that's probably the safest way to get across Freemanville Road. You have to take a little detour, but it's a lot safer than trying to cross that traffic. Here are some examples of how we've done it in the past. You can do it of variety of different ways, depending on the roads. Here are some tunnels that also work. Of course, you know these all mean money, but these do work. Here's one that's a corrugated metal. If you're asking the question, will we have to cut Freemanville Road? No, you don't. You can actually tunnel right underneath it without ever stopping traffic. We tunneled under the railroad track at Swanee, and the train never stopped. And we did it very similar to the one you see right here in tunnel. Option B. The gateways to the park, every park has to have a place where people need to go to come to know that they're there. Well, the most obvious one is the Active Acres, which is the front door. It's always been the front door to the golf course, and that's where people will come to participate in the swim, tennis, and whatever we end up doing with the building. But also, at the school, that will be a gateway entrance, and then when you actually get into the park, we'll have a parking lot, a small parking lot near the bathrooms that exist, so that people can come into the park and use the park. The Fulton County School property, there's a picture of it. It's undeveloped. We don't know exactly what Fulton County is going to do, what they're going to put there, but we'll cooperate with them as we go. The parking will be nestled into some specific areas in the South Woods, and the intent is to make it not visible. This is a picture of some parking we did at the old Simmons Bridge, Simmons Mattress Building on Jones Bridge Road back in 1979, actually. And this picture was taken about four years ago, so the tree survived. This can be done. Here's another one that we've done at Calloway Gardens. You may be more familiar with that, having been to Calloway Gardens, you can see these. But the idea is to put the cars under the trees so that they stay in the shade and they don't make this big ugly parking lot. Now, on the actual land itself, you've got 140 acres to deal with, and what do we do with it? Of course, everybody loves those open vistas and those meadows. Everybody still wants to look at a golf course, but that's not possible. So we did our research and our planning, and what you're seeing here is how we manage the open spaces. The woods will be allowed to remain as they are. The green will be restored, restored woodlands. The yellow is open meadow. It could be grass. It could be wildflowers. The dark green is where we're actually going to plant screens, trees, restore the forest so that you actually block the views from the houses and from the street and from the places that people don't want to either be seen from the park or see the park. And we heard quite a bit of that in the process of doing this plan. There's also the issue of, my house is on the park, there are people in the park, I don't like that. How do we manage that? The consensus of opinion, as we went through the residents, was they liked the typical Milton four rail fence, which is very common around here, and it says equestrian. It says exactly what we want to say. So we, the yellow line is where we have to put a fence like that in order to separate the park from the residents, so that they feel some sense of security. That's a pretty long bit of fence, and as you can see at the top, that's what it'll cost to build that fence. And a fence like that is not maintenance-free, as you know. It requires quite a bit of maintenance every year. Now, we'll talk about the Active Acres. That's the area right at the entrance where the old clubhouse used to be, at Seven Acres. We went in and we looked at what exists, wrote a long, extensive report on what was the conditions of everything that was there. And in the public meetings, we found out that everybody's happy with the tennis the way it is. They don't want it to go away. It only has four courts. They feel like very strongly it needs at least five, probably six, in order to have a better facility. The swimming pool is working fine. It's in good shape. It needs to be a little bit of cleanup, doctor up, paint up, make it look a little better, but it's functioning. There's a swim team that functions there. They love it. They enjoy it. It's actually got more people participating in the pool now than it did when it was a country club. Both of those groups want to maintain that. Both of those groups said they'd like to have facilities inside the clubhouse building for changing, for restrooms, for meetings, for exercising and training, and it could be a great place to have those things. So the building's there. So this is our first pass at a base plan. We decided to try to get six courts in there. There is room to do that. We may change them a little bit when you actually get down into the design, but we can get six courts in there. We can build a, we want to add a little pavilion on the back of the building to give an open pavilion space, because this is a park, and the building would have to be closed for security reasons unless you're renting it, unless you're going there for a purpose. You can't just leave it open for people to come in and out. The swim tennis, the swim and tennis people can control the bathroom, so they can come in and out as they see fit. So we wanted to add an open-air pavilion to the back of the building that's, anyone can walk up and use it when it's not being rented. We added a little open event lawn on the back, so that if you are having an event there, your kids can spill out on the lawn, you can play. It's just an open space. And we threw in a couple of sand volleyball courts, because in my opinion, I think this is a great place for that to occur, that people will come here just for that reason. And if you're going to spend money on a facility like this, you want to put stuff in there that people are going to come use. You don't want a white elephant that sits there and nobody uses it. There were other things that they asked for that we didn't put in the first phase, which is on the next page. We went in, we added a playground for the kids. We also extended the pool. There's a space there big enough you can extend the pool and put in a slide or a swim to, a water slide and a splash pad, and make it a bigger, more attractive facility. We doctored up the event lawn, so maybe you could have more formal events there. And we added a little shelter at the tennis courts. But all together, you can see what these are going to cost. But all together, you can see what these are going to cost. But in our opinion, we, and we talked about this on two ways. Do we create a facility that you turn over to a person to lease and run and try to make a living on it? Or do you put it with the Parks Department and let the Parks Department run it? And honestly, to make that decision, we really need a marketing study to tell us whether that facility would survive if it were opened up to the public and somebody was leasing it to run it. So unless we have that kind of analysis, it would really be difficult for us to sit here and tell you that you need to turn it into an event facility. I think that's, oh, the buildings. The building, as you heard Will say, we, we evaluated it. The outside walls are strong, the tresses are all the way across. We could tear every wall out on the inside and the roof would still be there. So that allows us to move everything around on the inside if we so choose. To, to make it a usable public facility that you could go in and rent or have an event or church group or kids group. We opened it up so you could have three levels of multipurpose rooms, a small cafe serviced by what's an existing kitchen there that's in really good shape. It can be reduced or it can be left as is. And over on the bathroom side, we're going to leave it alone and just open and access from the outside. And that would be a little less expensive to do. Or we can just completely gut it and start over on the inside and make, make the bathrooms and those facilities a little better. When I looked at this a few minutes ago, I thought maybe I would change the men's and women's around because the women's probably ought to be bigger because you've got a swim team and they're going to go in there and change. So these are all conceptual at this point. These are all ideas. These are all open to criticism. They're open to change and addition. That's where we are at this point as we get ready to produce the final plan. Will?
Okay. Thank you, Mac. So what we've attempted to do is provide some high level cost estimates for the build out of the space and tie those to the phases that I walked you through. So to do the immediate safety improvements, address those and open the park to the public, it's about $530,000. These are high level approximate costs. To grow and install the North Woods and the complete soft surface trail is about 2.7 million. And then to add that Dinsmore Road side path, all of these are iterative and all these costs build upon one another. So it is not just new costs. They are, they are building upon the investment cumulatively. And I don't know that I need to walk through each of the costs. I will bring your attention down to the general land management, which is the second to last item, which includes the site hydrology remediation and landscaping. In that number would be addressing all of the failed drainage issues. Included in that number is the Milton style fencing, the additional birmingham to provide screening for the residential properties. And those dollars could be spent at any time. So we're not tying that to any particular phase. We have that out there to, to address and take forward as the city felt the need. And then Phase 3B, there is no dollar associated with it as connections to future trails will be looked at as part of subsequent trail analysis. So altogether, it's about a $17 million build out over time for the draft concept plan. That is a relatively low number when we look at dollars spent for similar type trails, similar type parks. Generally, a rule of thumb for build out of parks is about a million dollars for every three to five acres. So this is coming in a little below that primarily for the fact that it's a light touch with this project and there's no hard surface trails. They're all natural surface trails. So what comes next? We're going to, with your input, we'll go back and revise the concept plan. We're going to develop an executive summary document that puts all of this into a beautiful, succinct document along with visualizations of what the park can and might look like. And that can be used to continue to build support, find and grow advocates and partnerships with other organizations and funding partners. As I told you, we'll continue to evaluate trails beyond. And then one of the important early wins that we recommend is a public process to name the park. It's been over a year that the park has been in the public domain. We refer to it as the park at the former Milton Country Club. It's not particularly a sexy title. And so opening up the naming process to the public is probably a really fun and important way to demonstrate momentum and advance the project to the next phase as it heads into some form of implementation. So with that, I would love to open it up to your comments, insights, criticisms, and we want to be thoughtful and respond to you. So thank you so much.
Okay. First question I have either Prag or Michelle. Is this document something we can get online so that the public would have access to that?
Yes, Mayor. So this presentation will be posted on our website and we will basically forward the links to all of our stakeholders so that everyone can see this PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to make one statement to the, to the public. You know, this is being presented to the council, myself and the council, and this is our first, first time looking at it. So again, this is a, a draft and suggestions. It's, you know, it's not a plan that's, that's a heart and stone or whatever. It's, we certainly want to get feedback and then get the council to give feedback and whatnot. But I'll open up to questions. Carol?
I always look like I have a lot of questions. And I do have some questions, so, but gentlemen, thank you for that quite comprehensive explanation and walking us through and everyone through so much material so quickly. Naturally, I'm going to lead with an equestrian question. The, the trail that goes along Chicken Creek and then turns into, which is a shared bridle path, and then we have a future park. The sum total between the North and the South Woods is roughly, what, for a bridle trail? 2.8?
Yes. Let me bring up that slide for us. And...
And the, the reason I lead with this is because it does not, once you're at Dinsmore, you're at Dinsmore. Is that correct? So there is no loop here. You can loop it apparently in South Woods, but when you're at Dinsmore, you're at the end of the road, correct?
Correct. For now.
Right.
And you will see that we have indicated above the north, the end here, there is a loop to be able to turn around your horse before reaching Dinsmore in the interim. And then the goal would be to add a bridle path north, or westward on Dinsmore and then ultimately get to Birmingham Park with a future connection. But for the immediate term within the park, that would come to a loop in, before you reach Dinsmore.
Okay. So is this, conceptually for equestrians, is this considered more of a passing through park onto the greater trail system and rather than a destination park where one would go and ride and then go back to one's trailer and leave?
The answer is yes and. We have tried, attempted to create a network of equestrian paths that could be a experience for the afternoon or the day between the variety of equestrian paths in the South Woods and then this main trunk line up to Dinsmore. And then that path that gets over to the trailering facilities on the Fulton County School property. So we think that provides in terms of the linkages, a fair amount of, of riding opportunities, but then would grow over time as a pass through to a greater connected system.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that that number, and Mac, you, you may need to correct us, correct me, but I believe that number of the 2.8 may only include that from the Fulton County School property to Dinsmore and does not include the smaller bridle paths within the South Woods. It does not. So the, the number is actually slightly larger.
Okay.
Okay?
But van, and I, I won't belabor this because we can do this also offline, but then getting off of the horse van, you all see that being primarily on the school property or where you sit?
The only trailering facilities accommodated in the plan would be on the Fulton County School property.
That is...
I, I have, I have a problem with that because we're, we're basing, I'm, I'm guessing this is a very expensive part of this plan. And it is a school property, and I do think that there will be a school there someday. And I don't foresee the school system allowing folks to trailer in and unload horses. And I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but it is probably a really expensive part of this plan, that eight foot wide bridle path with the retaining wall for horses. And I think we really do need to look at the potential use by equestrians.
Well, I would, I would say I, I have issues on both sides. And, and again, we do spend a lot of time talking about runners and walkers and everybody else, but there were a few glaring things here when it comes to this massive amount of money. It sounds great to go underneath Freemanville, but there's a, an acclimation you would have to do with your horse. Not, not all horses are going to go under there. And they're certainly not going to go under there with some of the, the activity that's co-mingled at that time. So that could be a nonstarter for a lot of people. I know Laura could hang on, and I'm pretty sure I could, but I wouldn't want to find out. But I, I do think that there are some issues with that. So, but if in fact, the expectation is that, that riders will then be fulfilled by leaving this property onto the greater connectivity of the central trail system, we have a number of people who are not in favor of the central trail system as it has been outlined. And I would not want for it to ever be a foregone conclusion that a rider, you know, can't really maximize the experience unless they go off this property throughout the trail system. Because all of those people have not yet truly been heard in the way that they want to be heard, which is the point of the stakeholder meeting.
Correct.
So I think that for me and possibly for Laura, when you look at the price tag on the other side of Freemanville, I think we need to make sure that the experience within the park for equestrians is on par for everybody else and not have an expectation that you have to go off into the central trail system to have a full riding experience. Because as this is, I mean, I don't know, was that a 40 minute walk?
Two point, not even, 2.8 miles on a horse. I mean, we just really need to look at the, the cost benefit for...
It's about a 30 minute walk, and, and I'm not sure that many people would trailer over for that experience. And, and then on the other side, I'm not sure it's fair to ask the central trail people to pick up the other side of that experience.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick point of order. I think it's self-evident what the answer is. Do we want to have public comment after council questions or?
No, I believe...
I do have one that did come in.
Yeah, and my bad. Then I thought I had already asked that. So I would like to get public comment if that's all right.
Can you do that now?
Yeah.
And that is from Mr. Jack Linden.
And I apologize, I thought I had asked that before.
That was late.
Okay.
I put mine in late. Hi, I'm Jack Linden at 14810 East Bluff Road. I'm happy to see all of you again. Ms. Crockerly, I haven't met you before, but I, just for your benefit, the rest of you know, I was chairman of the Milton Grove's Green Environmental Committee for about six years here in the city. What I want to talk about is some of the drainage issues and particularly, I, I'm not sure how many of you heard this in the past. I should start to say, I'm sorry I wasn't at the meetings in October. My wife and I were out of town, so we couldn't attend. We did submit some written comments, but to this, on the same issue. The Chicken Creek prop, the Chicken Creek that borders the, what is that, the east side of the park and is the border between our subdivision, North Valley and the park, and the, and the new park. That, that Chicken Creek has suffered tremendously over the years from erosion problems. And most of those erosion problems are due to the fact that when the subdivision and the golf course were built, drainage lines were placed underground and large, you know, I'm talking three, four foot diameter drainage pipes came, come out into the stream at right angles to the stream. And so whenever there's any significant drainage out of those pipes, it washes away the North Valley side of that stream. And it's to this, to the extent where we essentially can't use safely the trail anymore. The, it's been undercut right to the edge of the trail and in some cases underneath the trail. So we had plans as of two years ago, the North Valley Homeowners Association had plans to redo our side of that stream. We couldn't get the golf course to agree to work with us to take care of their side of it. But when we heard that the, the city was contemplating purchasing the property, we stopped that project for the moment. And, and we were hoping that we could work with the city to do both sides of the stream, get rid of the drainage issues that are causing most of the problems on our side of the stream. Our, our project was priced out at something a little over $300,000, which is stopped. So I, I just wanted you folks to be aware of the fact that that's part of the drainage issues that are there in the park. And particularly this, I, I, it, it boggles my mind still today that anybody would put drainage pipes into the stream at right angles and not expect that there was going to be some major erosion issues. But that's the way it is. So we're hoping that that can be addressed. I know when, when I was talking to Carter about this before he left, there was some discussion about the fact that the drainage could be rerouted and into the ponds, into the existing ponds that are on the site. So that would certainly be, help a lot with that. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And if anybody has any questions about it, I'd be glad to give you any more of the history that you want to know. And I'm sure, as you probably are aware, the new head of our association is Colt Little, who is now is chairman of the, the Green Space Committee. So he, he, he's another resource that obviously you can have when addressing this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any more public comments, Sootie?
That's all, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. All right. So Carol, were you, do you have any more questions?
No, I appreciate it. We can go offline later. Thank you for your presentation.
And, and one comment. And again, I'm, although I, I do have horses, I, I know there's, you know, the equestrian part and obviously sounds great and we want that. I'm going to guess, assume, you guys know more about it than I do though, that's a tricky thing, you know? Just because not everyone that's an equestrian in Milton and has a horse will do this. I know in my experience, if you've got a trail horse, a dead broke trail horse, you might take them on here, but if you've got a show horse or a, you know, something like that or a hot blooded horse, you're not going to bring them out in the public and all that. So Rick, did you have a?
Yeah. And the comment I've got is I like the idea of actually trying to get this park usable, which would be to, you know, address the safety hazard and open it public. Get it so that, because we've got a lot of parkland, but we're not developing it. And to get a passive park where we can do it maybe for reasonable cost to get it started so people can actually go and use it, I'm in favor of that. I know we have to go through the, the details. One question, you've got, you know, the, between the 530K cost to address safety hazard and open it public, you've got 2.7 million to install North Woods U Trail. And then below that, you've got to create the North Woods Loop, which is part of making that really a usable trail for most people. Do you see that, that 2.7 million a necessary step before you do the connectivity and create the North Woods Loop so that you could actually have a walkable loop? Because to me, that makes a little bit more sense. And again, we're not making decisions for that.
Yep. Absolutely. The sequentially, those could be, those could be reversed. And so you address the safety hazards, fill in the gaps, put in the base, reuse the cart path, add Dinsmore, then you have a loop. I sequenced it this way to try to make sure that we were honoring the guiding principles and try to get those cart paths out of the way and move that trail farther away from the residential properties as possible. And it would be my recommendation that that is a, a better goal to, to begin to get the build out than that last .2 miles of the Dinsmore connection. Because I still think it is a useful U even without the, the Dinsmore piece. But it could be inverted either way.
I have a question real quick. Sorry. Isn't there, there's already a sidewalk from the active...
There is, but it doesn't get all the way to what used to be Fairway One. There is a missing gap.
Okay.
And the existing sidewalk that is there is relatively narrow and does not contribute to the park-like character that I think we would want to pull out.
But, but it, it, it could suffice.
Yes, and you could... Yes, and you could get that last little .1 missing gap. And we could price that. We could add a new little piece in here. Absolutely.
So I agree with Councilmember Moore with, I, I would like to see us get this park open, and at the $530,000 estimate, to see how it's used, and to see how the citizens might, in the future, use it. But to get it open, to start to, to evaluate that, I have, I have a little bit of sticker shock over, and I know it, in your business, that's probably not a lot, but I think it, it is to me. And so, but I, I know that our citizens are eager to get there, to see it, to use it. And I think we're going to learn a lot about it once it gets open. My only other comment was on the fencing. I understand that was a priority for a lot of the adjacent property owners. And I would like to just suggest, I don't know if that's four or three-board fencing, but it, you can take down the, the cost quite a bit if it's, if you take one board out of it. It, it still is a barrier, and that's a lot less lumber for something that is all the way around the property.
And I would say something about budget, too. And, you know, as Councilmember Bentley said, sticker shock, and I'm sure the public, too. When you look at it overall, you know, I, I see the process as number one, prioritizing what we can get the most bang for the buck in the beginning, so the public can use it. Then you can, you know, then we can decide later what's a priority. And, and again, I appreciate all those numbers, but as we all know, numbers can fluctuate. They also, we can value engineer, or, you know, as those are, are bid out, we can look at options, too, so that doesn't necessarily have to spend that kind of money.
What I wanted to make sure was that I didn't come to you with a number that was artificially low, and you go forward, and then...
Correct. It's better to have conservative numbers.
And there are contingencies built into some of these.
Okay. Rick?
I guess tying into, and again, I, I appreciate the order, and I'm having a little sticker shock at the same time, too. I, I, I like the long-term plan where this could go. As, as Carol had mentioned, there is some concern or things we still have to work through as far as trail connectivity. What does that really mean? Is that really, we've talked about it for years. What do we really want to do as it pertains to this property and how we utilize it? So that's a separate conversation. So if I go past to connect Fulton County Schools property, if I kind of take that off, we've got add Southwoods vehicular entry. I like the concept of what you showed as far as having it underneath the, the trees, having either unpaved property or limited pavement, because then you keep it more natural. That's what you see around the state when you go to state parks.
Correct.
And it works very well. It's easier to maintain, and it's less costly than if you put in a lot of tarvia all over. Do we know what our, our parking capacity is today up at the active side, which would be the initial access point, and then what in this proposed Southwoods vehicular entry, which would be on the park property, correct?
Correct.
What, what would you be adding as far as capacity? What's in that price, or what are you recommending?
And I will, I will shift that to Mac if, if Mac has a number. I will, I don't think we mentioned, in the active acres concept, to the east of the Park Lodge, the former clubhouse, there is additional parking that is proposed. So there's 126 site, parking spaces on, at the active acres today. And I think there's an additional 26 that are called for here where the existing maintenance barn is. So we would gain at the active acres in terms of proposed for the Southwoods. Mac?
You gain, but you also lose. When you put the tennis courts in, you lose 26.
Got it.
You put the other court, so it's a...
So it's an option. It's one or the other.
One or the other.
Okay. Because you can't use it twice. Okay.
So 126 is what you're going to get, either leaving it alone, or putting the tennis courts in, you still get the same.
You could add 20, you could add 26 if you in fact didn't do the extra tennis courts. So that's the option. Up on the north side by the active park, what is proposed when you look at the Southwoods vehicular entry? That would be coming, a takeoff from Freemanville Road, and kind of entering on the south side of the park?
We didn't...
Southwest?
We cost estimated 50 spaces.
50 spaces.
Now, when it comes down to spaces, cars for a park like this, the number of parking spaces controls the number of people that use the park. The more you put cars in, the more people are going to come, the more they're going to use the park.
Wait, I'm sorry.
So knowing that we had spaces...
I'm speaking to the microphone.
Okay. Knowing we had spaces, or thought we were going to have spaces on the school site, we just put a minimum number of spaces on the other side. And I thought 50 was just a nice number, nice round number.
And, and I guess I, I along that same thing, what you'd said earlier, Laura. I, I share a concern of putting a big investment into a parcel that we in fact don't own. That would be a concern, a long-term concern, because I could be putting money that, that will work great for a few years, but then the city could lose that investment. So I, I guess that's where I'm looking at, thinking, what do we do to make this park where we know we own it and we contain it? What are our options as we go forward? And I know we're not making those decisions today, but that's just something that's rolling in my mind.
I can give you an evolution of some options we looked at. Before we knew about the opportunity to potentially cross that property, we tried to come in on Lewis Road. And we tried to put trailer parking and cars over on the number 10 Fairway. And we were able, we can put them in there, but what that does is it brings so much traffic down Lewis Road that it just turned everybody off. So we said, all right, we, if we could get in the other way, we could still do the same thing. We could put horse trailers and cars on those open spaces. You just have less open space. You just have parking lots and, and places for, for buses and for, for trailers. But yeah, you got 143 acres. You got, you got room. You could put some parking in there.
Well, I, I think you heard the public correctly, at least anybody who lives there, which I would be concerned on Lewis Road, that's great if that was an access point, but it's not for the people that live there right now. So if we can look at, as we design, I think we've got to look at what's best really for everybody, and then how can the park be better utilized?
The, the, the golf courses lay perpendicular to the slopes, so you have big, flat areas.
Okay.
So it's perfect for putting in a rather large parking lot in the middle of the Northwoods, and trying to hide it as much, as best we can. But yes, the space is there.
And you could do it, like you said, I guess you'd have to look at individual topography and the trees and whatever. But I like the concept of more natural, where you're not putting impervious structure. I think it ties into what, kind of the way you're designing the whole park to make it really be more like a, a walkable park.
Well, you know, by using pervious, we don't have to do all these detention systems and mortality systems that also eat up land and change things.
Right. Okay.
And let me just address one thing, too. I know you brought up Rick and others. The, I know the, the preliminary discussion about if parking is used on the, the school board property, BOE property, that it would be something that would be permanent. If, you know, it would not be, the, the BOE would be involved with it so that it wouldn't be taken away. It would be used by both, you know, the school.
So if we make the investment, we're making sure we track our investment.
Correct. Laura, did you have a question?
No, that was it. I was just going to ask where we were with the IGA, or whatever commitment we have from the school board on that property. Because again, if we're building a plan around it, we really need to have that locked down.
Okay. I think Jim Craig may have a comment if you want to step up.
And I do have one public comment that just came in, too.
Okay.
Would you like me to defer until the citizen makes their public comment?
No, go ahead. And I'm, I'm not sure what you...
Okay. The, as of this time, there's been a series of negotiations between the attorneys for the Fulton County School Board, as well as the city attorney, back and forth. We have presented to the Fulton County School Board what we believe is a very workable solution involving addressing the last two issues, one of a risk management question, and the other related to the, goodness, was it risk management?
I'm not sure.
Oh, 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 and the police services, excuse me, the police services of the area. The parcel does have a very large concrete pad on it that's pre-existing from when that used to be the Horse Blanket Factory. And the indications we have received from the school board is that they are quite amenable to that being a location to put cars on it. There would be no demolition of trees. It is in the park, in the property enough that it will not be visible to the road, but it is also close enough that there's an existing road that can be reinvigorated and allow vehicle access to get to it. So that is, that's where that's at right now. That, the parking there does not appear to be a hindrance.
Okay.
I guess just a comment, then, to make that really usable as we access the park, then we'd have to cross into, what are we doing from underneath Freemanville and the safety and that type, type part? But you're saying that you're working on the access with the board, and they're, they're amenable to let us use what's already there if we can find a safe way to connect to the park?
That is a correct statement, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Can I answer any other questions before I sit down? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right.
One more question on where we are. To me, this all ties together. We're getting our master plan, our Parks and Rec master plan soon, and we're expired with our MOU. And so I foresee that we might have some expenses in the active area as far as Parks and Rec. So for me, I would, I really want to see where we are with the, the expiration of the MOU, this park, except for getting it open at the bare minimum, and also obviously maintaining the, the swim and tennis at its level right now. But I'm a little bit uncomfortable with what we might be facing with our, a gap in our active area if, with the, the open-ended MOU right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Sudi, you say we have a, a public comment. And again, I want to make sure, I know our rules stay laid cards we don't listen to, but I certainly don't ever want to cut the public off if they have something to say. Is council okay with allowing public comment? Okay, if you'd call that. Speaker?
And that's Ms. Beth Wilson.
Hi, Beth Wilson, 15285 High Grove Road. And I think, I just want to make a quick comment, that I think it would be great for the city to allow the passive area to be used as quickly as possible. However, as a homeowner, right on, off the first tee, it does concern me that my property does go into the easement that has not been dealt with yet. And they're really, because of the way the easement is laid out, there's really no distinction between where my property ends and where the park begins, because that's an area where it's a large plot of, like, open space. So if kids want to play, you know, my kids used to go out there and play football when, you know, the club was closed, it was perfect. But how would, how would people visiting the park, as people in the community, outside the community, know which is mine, which is the actual park? And so I would hope that the city would consider putting those fences along the areas, the first, second, third, you know, tees, where you do have that access to cart paths that are in somewhat good shape until you get to the first bridge. So just something please to consider as you move forward. Also, one thing that was not brought up in the presentation is how do you keep people out of our neighborhood? There is an access point here for, for emergency vehicles, but what's going to keep someone from coming and parking to access that little area within our neighborhood? And I know that is a concern. The other thing I want to speak of is on behalf of the active parts, that was mentioned about, the swim and tennis wanting to use that building at some point. I just want to mention that last summer it was unavailable, unavailable to us, and we understand why. However, moving forward, if you are going to prioritize things, I think it is important to think about the safety of the swimmers and tennis players and inclement weather. There really is nowhere for them to go. So if there are any camps that the, the city is going to allow for through Parks and Recs with even tennis, you know, Terry can't put, I mean, can't put that many people in a bathroom. You know, if there was bad weather, especially those outside bathrooms. So again, I know that clubhouse is not in great condition, but as you're thinking about reconfiguring and what options there are, I think that's an important piece when it is used heavily, you know, in the summer for the swim, but also year-round for the tennis players. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your feedback. Okay. No more public comments, Sudi?
No.
Okay. Other, back up, any more questions? So if, if you wouldn't mind, just, as we wrap up, kind of go over the process, the, the process moving forward.
Yes. So we will continue to work with city staff to refine the concept plans based on the input from the public and from all of you. We will then work to develop that hard copy document that will codify or document the process and the concept plan. I would suspect that we will continue to share that and bring you through and along that process to make sure that we're getting it right. Beyond the park, as we mentioned, we will be having the subsequent trail conversations with the stakeholders along the Central Milton Trail. And as part of that, we'll be looking at alignment issues and opportunities, and hearing from the community about constraints and opportunities. And that will be going on for the next several months. So those are, those are the immediate next steps, along with the park naming process that city staff, Shannon Ferguson, will be championing.
Okay. And also do want to reiterate that this draft document that, that we're looking at will be, the public will have access to it. And so the public knows, please feel free to take a hard look at that and give any feedback back to, to council or staff as we consider, you know, moving forward. So...
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, too. Okay, Sudi, if you would, please call our next item, and do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay.
And our final item is discussion of naming of an all-inclusive play park. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall that approximately two and a half to three years ago, the city was approached by children's charities with the idea of raising a half a million dollars to donate to the city of Milton a, an all-inclusive playground. And as of this time, while we have not yet specifically identified where that playground will be, this is an ongoing fundraising effort. And a very unique opportunity has been presented to children's charities to allow them to accelerate the fundraising efforts. And so to discuss that, I'd like to present Ms. Lauren Holmes.
Most of you know me, but for those of you who don't, my name is Lauren Holmes. I am co-founder and a board member of Children's Charities LLC. Children's Charities volunteers seek to make a difference in the community in which they live, North Fulton and South Forsyth. Originally founding the group, Milton Friends of Children's Healthcare in 2008, we developed the current 501(c)(3) in 2012 to ensure the funds stay in our community. The organization is 100% volunteer-driven and dedicated to supporting and developing programs that enrich children's lives in our area. Some of the projects we have funded since 2008 are an emergency transport vehicle at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta and Forsyth, an air tracking device that can detect autism in children as young as two months old, a fully-funded equine summer camp for kids with autism, several state-of-the-art vein viewers for Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, urgent care centers. We have provided cell phone, uh, charging stations for Children's Healthcare of Atlanta Urgent Care Centers throughout the state, supplied Thanksgiving dinners to 25 needy families, supported monthly luncheons for Stand It For Kids, a mentoring, mentoring program for foster kids at Independence High School. We support Cure For Childhood, uh, Childhood Cancer, and we have sponsored the City of Milton's Camp Joyful Souls for One Session. At this time, we are working to provide an all-inclusive playground serving children of all abilities and disabilities in North Fulton and surrounding counties, where all children can play together. I am here this evening to discuss the naming of the playground. There is a chance the Victory Junction Foundation, a Richard Petty Foundation, may be willing to donate or sponsor a large amount to the playground if we name it Victory Junction. They are looking to gain a presence in North Georgia, where they have another playground named Victory Junction in North Carolina. They have not asked to place the playground anywhere in particular, or change the playground equipment in any way. We understand the city needs to decide where the park will be placed, and that needs to go through public opinion. The foundation is possibly willing to donate before any of those items need to be decided. That is why this is such a great opportunity, that the Victory Junction Foundation is not asking for anything other than the naming of the playground. This would be a great opportunity for children's char- This would be a great opportunity for children's charities in the city of Milton to have the park built sooner than later. We are asking for the approval of the name of the park to be Victory Junction. Anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions?
I just want to make a comment. So thank you very much, Lauren, for all your work on children's charities. I couldn't let you sit down without saying that. I know everyone else up here feels the same way. You guys are amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's great. And I do want to say, you know, procedure-wise, we're obviously not taking any kind of votes, but you're running this by us. Does council, does anybody have a problem considering that?
No.
Okay. All right. So.
It's kind of a catch 22. We have to go to them and say, we're pretty much on board. And then if so, they will consider it and cut us a check.
Yeah. And again, Ken, I'll leave that up to you as procedure-wise, you know, would, would we need to, you know, right now, I'm not seeing anyone that's not on board with that.
Depends upon the level of formality they want. It may be though that this may pick up a little more steam if there was a council resolution that could actually be transmitted and that may actually get the objective fulfilled. So I would recommend, subject to Stacy or Steve, putting it on the agenda is get this resolution together and get this approved if that's.
Is everybody okay with do a resolution and maybe on our next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Rick, you have a question?
Lauren, I'll echo Laura's comments. I think all of us up here really appreciate what you guys have done and your involvement and actually turning to work towards inclusivity as far as with kids. Do you know what the size, you said a sizable chunk? Do you have anything or is that not, you're not able to discuss the?
$3.
$3? Okay, that's sizable.
The person that is coming to us and discussing this is not, I guess it's hard for him to say, yes, we can do this, but what he was saying was between $300,000 and $500,000.
Okay. So that would be almost, almost double or adding, adding another.
Yeah. Which if we got on the high end, we could add to what we already have because we have raised, hopefully by the end of this year, half of where we need to be. And so if they gave us the five, there's another whole section of equipment that we could put in for actually adults. That would be like exercise equipment and things like that. I understand that Steve Alpharetta is putting that in over at Wells Park. So there's, there's a lot more we could do, but we are looking at a minimum of a third of an acre and that does not include fencing and sidewalks. If that would be, you know, fencing has to go in, but not necessarily sidewalks, depending on where it goes.
So what you're advocating is still for us to actually have this park be built and like, like you'd said, there's, you know, there's a lot of process to actually go through where it would be and all that type of thing. But what you're advocating with, if we endorse this, is really to have that park be built in Milton.
Yes. Well, we've discussed this before. The city has agreed that they would donate the land somewhere.
Somewhere, yeah.
$600,000, we can name it after you. I just wanted to support.
No, again, great cause and thank you for all you do, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. That'll conclude this work session. Anybody else have anything? Matt?
I do have one question, and I don't know if we can talk about it tonight, but just I'm going to do some question on the environmental impact on the event that happened this weekend. That was on WSB TV. Obviously, we had the situation. People are just wondering, you know, what does that involve with the streamways and the land, et cetera? Do we, as a city, can we put out an update on, on some of that as soon as possible just to help people?
You know, what I would say, and Stacy, if you guys, obviously the DA and EPA and all kind of folks are involved in it, you know, if you could get together some reports and pens here and send something out.
Right. That's what I would recommend. I'm not sure that we have the right folks.
Yeah, I'm not an expert in that.
I'm not either.
Fortunately.
But the questions are coming and we need to do something soon.
All right. Okay. Thank you, guys.